The largest contributors of money are the DC, California, Virginia, and New York. The groups that are giving the most money are the 1630 Fund, a progressive fund in DC, and the Tides Foundation from California. They respectively gave 2.5 and 1.8 million. The Vote Yes campaign, that is basically the 4 million that was raised, or the 4 million of the 4.8 million that was raised by the Vote Yes supporters came from one man, Richard Uhlhein. He's an Illinois billionaire. Both groups have had out-of-state money. But it's interesting that he is also part of the group that is from the conservative side, had to do with the January 6 thing. So we're getting a lot of out-of-state money that's active in this. It's interesting to see how much money, though, is coming from DC and from California, which is really out-of-state. So when it comes down to it, both sides are being funded by outside interests at almost exactly the same rate, when you think about it. So let's look at hypocrisy on that. Make sure when you're listening to those ads on television that you're paying attention to what they're saying about the out-of-state monies that are coming in supporting what. So who is supporting this? And what do they require to have their constitutions changed? One of the things we were talking about last meeting, two weeks ago, when I told you, you require greater than a 50% majority to pass anything for the city of London, correct? Very good. Let's hear what some of the other groups do. The Democratic Party of Ohio, the Democratic Party of Ohio opposes issue one. They want the no vote. They require 60% of their delegates vote in favor of any changes to the organization's constitution. The party requires any candidate sinking its official endorsement before the primaries must receive the backing of at least 60% of the executive committee. 60% seems to be a good number for the Democratic Committee. Further, in order for members of the Democratic National Committee to revise its charter, they must meet a threshold of 2/3, 66%. This is very important. Takes more than a 50% majority and one vote. The ACLU, they also are an outspoken opponent of issue one. They are saying vote no. ACLU Ohio's bylaws require a 60% vote to remove an officer or a member of their Board of Directors. The national ACLU bylaws also require, with exceptions, a 2/3, 66% vote for the board to overturn an action by the executive committee. Planned Parenthood, Planned Parenthood has lobbied aggressively against issue one, describing it as anti-democratic change, and its Ohio chapter opposes issue one. Planned Parenthood requires a vote of 2/3, 66%, to amend its own bylaws, going all the way back to 2007. League of Women Voters, the League of Women Voters in Ohio is lobbying against issue one, no vote. Chapters of the League of Women Voters in Ohio, such as the Columbus Chapter, require a 2/3, 66% vote in order to amend its bylaws. The NWACP, its Ohio chapters have come out in opposition of amendment issue one. A 2/3, 66 vote is required to amend the bylaws of local chapters of the NWACP. Teachers Unions, and this is the last one that I have the information on. Multiple teachers unions in Ohio, like the Northeastern Ohio Education Association and the Columbus Education Association, require a 3/4, 75% vote to amend their constitution. The Ohio Education Association is part of the coalition of those groups opposing issue one. They provided a million dollars of that 14.8 that we talked about earlier. This was written by Spencer Gross, and he's part of the Protect Our Constitution group. So again, these excerpts are out there. This was actually published as a letter to the editor in the Highland County Press, and I don't have the date on that, but it obviously was very recently. So thank you for your time. I'm just saying, be savvy voters, pay attention to what's going on out there. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to our committee reports. We'll begin with Mr. Stahl.
Haven't been any committee meetings. We have finance and safety service next week.
Okay. Mr. Hitt.
Safety committee meeting's the 8th at 5:00 o'clock in the meeting room over here. Have nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Hayes.
Okay, I have two reports here from VPU. First one's from July 14th. There was a special meeting held. Meeting was called to order at 7:30 a.m. Board members present, all three board members were present. Superintendent's present, Bill Long, Water Superintendent. Mr. Vest made a motion to hire Jonathan Green as water assistant operator at Step B at Mr. Lulonic seconded the motion, and the motion carried. Statement from Mr. Long, new water plant update. We'll start up the plant in two weeks, run it for four days, and then we'll do some testing. Another note here, water bills will be estimated this month. Movement to adjourn at 7:41 a.m. by Mr. Vest, seconding, motion was carried. Okay, on to July 27th, 2023 regular meeting. All three board members were present. Superintendent's present, Rick Duncan, wastewater superintendent, Bill Long, Water Superintendent, and Jason Dazzle, sanitation department. City officials present, Mayor Klauser, myself, and Mr. Castle. Community members, Tom Boyd, Twyla Boyd, Ernest Boyd. The minutes from June 22nd and July 14th minutes, they were approved. Citizens' concerns, one of the citizens that was at the meeting attended a meeting with the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District. Mr. Vest and Mr. Skaggs stated that there has been official offer for the city to accept Plain City's sewage. Mr. Lulonic, Mid-Ohio has presented many options, conversations are still ongoing. The citizen, his comment was reviewed for accepting sewage from Plain City can be used in various areas wrong. There are specific rules, and Mr. Vest brought this up, specific rules for how funds from sewer revenues can be used. Moving on to Water Department, Superintendent Bill Long. The lead and copper reports will be going out next month, which would be this coming month. We had discussion about 17 Kendall Street, discussion regarding leak on the property. The board agreed to not make an adjustment on the bill. There's, it's quite a high bill. Mr. Skaggs was wanting to know how the new plant was coming. Mr. Long answered, Mr. Wiggins be coming in while testing has been done. There's no information available at this time. Mr. Skaggs had another question, is Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer a business for profit? Mr. Lulonic answered that, no, they are governmental. Mr. Long stated that directional drilling has drilled into 14 water lines, and repairs have been made to all of them. Under wastewater department superintendent Rick Duncan, we reviewed wastewater report. Mr. Lulonic, Mayor Klauser, and Tom Hale, county administrator, met at LOCI with Rick Duncan to discuss a screen and grinder issue. The county has agreed to make the repairs to the grinder and get it back online. Sanitation department, Jason Dazzle, and I do not have that report in front of me, and I apologize for that. I don't know why it's not on here, but it's not. Board of Public Utilities talked about acquiring new businesses with dumpsters in town is going well. We have six remaining businesses that we cannot pick up. Carol and I would like to bill these businesses a $300 permit fee instead of the trash collector. The $300 fee can be collected on their water bill. They took a trash truck to touch a truck. Evidently, kids love climbing around on it, love being up in it, so that's good. We've had a lot of bulk pickups this month, as well as a lot of yard waste. After that report, Mr. Vest made a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel. Mr. Skaggs seconded the motion, motion carried. After the executive session, they came out, and the meeting adjourned at 8:00 p.m. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Robinson.
I attended public service last night. Bill was not there, so all we had was the parking wreck to review. Landon went over the swimming pool. So far, the front desk is made, as of the end of July, the front desk has made $40,990 of their estimated $45,000, estimated revenues. Their concessions made $13,754. The last time we talked about, the racing pool wasn't holding the water that it was supposed to. They had American Leak Detection come out. They did find leaks in the expansion joint. All those repairs will be made once the pool is emptied. They will be replacing some sand filters in the main pool and the baby pool as well. Last day for the pool is August 12th. Callyn Park, the swings that were broken have been fixed, so those are up and running. They had their second movie night, which they watched Paw Patrol. Mary Mack Park, on August 13th, we'll have the Wheeler's Family Annual Whiffle Ball Tournament, which is always a very big event. And then with this program that he's running, they did start a sand volleyball league. Four teams signed up. They started it this past Sunday, and they'll go all the way through August 27th. There is an upcoming program. It's a youth outdoor fall volleyball league. It is for K through eight, boys and girls. $70 per child, $60 if you have multiple members inside of a family. You can register at City Hall, the pool, or on LondonOhio.gov backslash outdoors dash youth dash volleyball dash league. Player evaluations will be August 28th, and then our next meeting will be September 6th at 6:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peters.
Just elaborate, no, next Monday, August 7th, Personnel and Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eads.
I asked, attended the Service Committee, which Brian already gave most of that report. Just a couple other points to bring up. The pool repairs, they have a very wide range of what this could cost, and it was eye-opening. As little as $7,000, as much as $80,000, but it's really just a ballpark at this point. They do have, still have $14,000 in their account to make repairs, so we'll have to see what happens with that. The work on the ball fields, Field 2 at Mary Mack has been done. Field 1 and Park Avenue still need to be completed, and there was a discussion, I don't know if it belonged in the committee, but a long discussion about coyotes in the city. I asked Safety Service Director, maybe we can ask the wildlife officer to come to a future meeting and kind of address some of the things about coyotes and what can be done or not done.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything, Rex?
I'll address what Mr. Eads just brought up about coyotes. I did reach out to the natural resource wildlife officer. His comment was he would rather not come in a public setting to do the discussion. He said he would invite council members to give him a call, and he would talk to them and answer any questions they would see fit to ask, and we can pass along the question and answer everything you wanted to know about coyotes in two pages. So I'll pass that out to council members after it's over. That's pretty much all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. On to our old business for our second reading. You have Ordinance 19323, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 193-23, sponsored by John Stahl, and ordinance amending section 1496 of the Code of 51.
This has to do with changing the grass height, and I agree with, that I don't think it should be changed. My grass grew like a weed last week, too, and I could have gotten it.
Any further discussion? That was to change it from 10 inches to 6 inches, so that way, when the grass is cut, it doesn't leave a large amount of grass all over the sidewalks and the roads and everything, you know, because by the time they get around to cutting that, it could be 14 inches taller or higher. You cut that down, and I'm telling you, it's, there's grass everywhere, and it looks like a hayfield in the neighborhood.
I just want to, question was asked about the new changes that we made to speed up the process for the second mowing, and I talked to our code enforcer, Steve Hume, actually talked to him about it today, and he said, while he's thankful for that, the grass is still out of control by the time he gets to it with it being as high as it is. There's still process of getting a hold of a grass cutting company to go out and assess and give us a quote, get that to us, back to him. So we're looking still at another, another week from when he basically says we need to mow it, which has now been expedited. Once he visually sees it needs to be mowed, if it's been, this was their second offense, he can go ahead and get that process started. But it's still another week, and he said, the grounds just look horrible. He said, you've got to be able to catch it sooner. He said, if you don't like 6 inches, make it 8. He said, anything to get it, where he can get to it sooner. I think Mr. Councilman Eads spoke with him today. He might have something he'd like to share.
Mr. Eads.
I did. Regarding this ordinance, I did have a discussion with Safety Service Director Castle before, and at his request, I also had a discussion with Steve Hume, who's in the zoning department and is dealing with this issue. After these discussions, I'm still not convinced that we need to make all the changes as proposed. Mr. Hume has advised that even if we change the height requirement to 8 inches, it would be helpful, instead of the proposed 6 inches from the original 10 inches that's in there right now. They also pointed out that currently, the city must mail via certified mail warning letter to the property owner. There's a request to change this to allow for personal service also. We're posting a notice in a conspicuous place on the property, basically a warning on the, on a door or window. Mr. Hume advised that they'd also, he'd also asked that a notice be allowed to be mailed by regular mail. That's not included in this at this point. As you may remember, we changed the process last year to allow for only one notice a year to be sent via certified mail. After that, that wasn't going to be necessary. I don't know that we did or did not include the personal service or posting on the property. I thought last year, we discussed that after the first one, they could post, but evidently that wasn't in the language. Next, this, there is an emergency clause on this, so it would change the law immediately. However, we're halfway through the meeting, or the mowing season. So my objections to this at this point, I think 6 inches are too low. It's impossible sometimes to keep up with that. It creates a situation where many homeowners or tenants could be in violation due to weather or other mitigating circumstances. We should not change the law in the middle of the year, and we have not allowed to process changes that we enacted last year to even have a full year to see if they're working properly. Mr. Hume actually agreed that maybe there should be some changes to the language or to the ordinances we were discussing tonight. I don't know if anybody has anything else. I'm going to make an amendment or move to make an amendment after that, if there's any other discussion.
I mean, so with the discussion that we were having last night, another thing that we're running into is companies that are willing to mow these properties. So we've run out of majority of the individuals that were doing it, and after I talked to Mr. Castle, they're willing to do it, but the charge on that mowing is going to be substantial because once it gets to a certain level, you can't see the certain things that are inside the yard. I also think from a visual point in our city, we're trying to do so many things to liven our city that having, we've had enough time to look at the grass, and it still looks awful. I mean, it is August now, so we've seen the heavy parts of the year where the grass is growing, and there's properties that are being mowed. It just looks awful, and it's normally on, majority of these are on our main streets that are having high volume of traffic that are viewing. I'm also, it's, there's a lot of things in the city that need to be fixed with the visuals. I think our downtown needs taken care of with the grass that's growing amongst the bricks and everything, but that's a topic for another time. But I think from a visual standpoint, 10 inches is too much, so I think we need to find maybe not 6 inches, but something lower than 10 inches, because like we were talking about, it could be 12, 14, 15 inches by the time that we actually do get to mow it, and then having companies that are willing to come in and mow it at that height, because that does do some damage to it, equipment, their own equipment, their personal equipment that they run a business with.
And then I see that that would be a higher cost for that, because if the grass is too high, they're going to have to go in with a weed eater instead of a mower, because it's so high, they don't want to tear up their equipment. So if they catch the grass when it's a lot lower, like 6 inches or a little higher than 6 by the time you go through the whole process, you have a better chance to get that cut by an actual mower. This, you know, the, this is put in place here, and you know, the bottom line is, if you own a property, you should cut your grass. There's, I don't think that we should even really have to have something like this in place, but unfortunately, we do, because there's people who just don't cut their grass. And I think if you have a property, then you need to cut your grass, especially if you're in the downtown, as much work as we're getting done, and we got people putting millions of dollars into our city, you know, we're trying to beautify it. I think if you have a property, you need to cut your grass. That's the bottom line. So I think 6 inches is fine. I think it is, I think it's fine to catch it in time, so that if we do get someone that can cut it, they can actually use their mowing equipment versus, you know, a weed eater to go through the whole yard. Yes, we do.
May I have your comment?
Yes.
Do you want to add an address?
No.
Just a comment that, as well as downtown, I agree with Councilman Robinson and with President Comer. We need to have, thank you, we need to have an awareness of our city and pride in it, yes, and there are things that get out of control, illness, whatever, and, and heavy rains, and you can't get in. But we also have, like the bike path. I do live on First Street. That is where a lot of bike travel comes through with a lot of different people, and there are a lot of rental properties there. So it's not always the owners, it is also the tenants that don't necessarily take care of things. And so to have a speedier and a more thorough notification process, I think is an excellent idea. I actually had another homeowner come up to me recently and ask me about one of the houses. They said, is that vacant now? And it is not vacant. It is, but a tenant lives there, and it looked vacant. So it is something from a pride in the city. We do have a lot of traffic coming down First Street. Don't just focus on downtown. We need to focus on the city in total. Thank you.
Can I address part of, just one part of that?
Yes.
So this has language that not only would the property owner have to be notified, but tenants could be notified. They've, they've noted that if a tenant's there, they may not feel they have a responsibility, but once they're notified, they may get the grass mowed at that point. And also, I agree with Mr. Robinson that this would probably be a discussion for a later point, but if we're looking about the visuals of our city, the grass that grows up in the roadways, to me, is just as big as issue as someone's lawn. You drive through London, you don't know there's curbs where there are curbs some places, and we have weeds that are three foot high on Lafayette Street that anybody driving through the city sees that. So, Mr. President, I'm going to move to amend this legislation to change the height requirement to 8 inches from 6. I'm also going to ask to remove the emergency clause and make this change effective January 1, 2024. That's my proposal, my amendment.
All right, so we have a proposal to amend. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so you have a proposal to amend in a second. Clerk, please take the roll call to amend.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, so we have amended, let's see here, 1, okay, we've amended 19323. Rex?
I just have a question. I mean, there was three phases in that?
Two.
What's the January 1, 2024?
If we remove the emergency clause and make this effective January 1, 2024.
So I questioned, if you want to add to make it go into effect January 1st of 2024, what difference does it make if it's emergency or not? I just was asking. If you're going to put a timestamp on it, it doesn't matter where it goes into effect tomorrow or 30 days from now?
That's true. That's true.
Okay, I was just asking.
I'm just trying to eliminate the fact that it goes into effect now, mid-season.
Okay, but we did, you did, you got the amendment for the date, right?
Right.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay.
So now we have our amendment, let's see here, and this is only our second reading. What are our wishes after the amendment?
I'll move to adopt, or, I'm sorry, move to suspend.
A second.
First and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right, on to ordinance 19423, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved. Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance, ordinance 194-23, sponsored by John Stahl, and ordinance amending section 660 of the codified ordinances.
This goes along with the other, I'm not sure just exactly, I didn't make my notes.
There is a height restriction on that, so do you want to do the same thing for that?
There's a height restriction in 194 also?
I believe that's what Jennifer said.
Take a look.
There's a reference to, to a height.
Under 4B2, height 6 inches.
Yeah. 4B2, oh, that's 660.
Of the exhibit.
Yeah, there it is, there it is. I thought this was for the first ordinance and not the second. Then I move to amend this, also to include a maximum height of 8 inches. And to make this effective, the second part's to make this effective January 1, 2024.
A second.
All right, so we want to make the same amendments to 19423, first and second. Clerk, please take the roll call to amend.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, move to adopt.
Second. I'll make a motion to suspend.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, we have first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, now move to adopt.
Second.
First and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
19423 has been adopted, and it's good to see that we continue to try to make our city a better-looking place and take pride in our city. And we do not have any new business, so on to roundtable. We give Mr. Eads.
Thank you, sir. The only item that I'm going to bring up tonight on roundtable is that I asked our clerk if she would keep track of her hours last month and moving forward. Since I had to do minutes a few times, and we had some long meetings, and it took me six hours to do the minutes, I knew how long that she may have to face with that. that. So just out of curiosity, I wanted her to keep her hours, her hours for the two council meetings, the three committee meetings that she attends, and to do the minutes and other things that she has to do. She had 52 hours for the month of July. That's a lot more than I had. I know that.
So hopefully, August will go down since I bought that new transcribe app.
So she bought a new transcribe app to help to get those minutes and everything done. But I do agree that, you know, with all of the, all of the different background things and foreground things that we do require of our council clerk, and there's a lot. You know, there was a time when I did some of this myself before we got a new clerk, and then we had a clerk, and then we didn't have a clerk, and now we have a clerk again. But there is quite a bit involved in the background, especially with the committee meetings and with the minutes. And if there's a public hearing, different things, or timestamp, you have to get them to Board of Elections. You have to get different things to the, to the county and everything, but there is quite a bit involved with having that done. So I know that that position, I'm not sure exactly what was done before in, in council with the, with the council clerk, you know, for the past few years or so, how much was actually involved with that. But I know, you know, we're moving forward, getting a lot of things done in council, and I think there's a, there's a larger load that's, you know, kind of required or, you know, that we want to have from our council clerk. So I agree with Mr. Eads, too, that it's really a lot of time that's being put into that. Anyone else have any discussion on that?
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it, yeah.
Most definitely. These are some extremely well-written notes, and, you know, and I've looked at the definition there of, of the minutes, and the minutes are to give an account of what happened and not necessarily what was said, but we do have very detailed minutes, and they are very helpful because you can view those minutes and get an account of what actually happened, especially with some of this current legislation that we have in the city. It's good to go back through the minutes and be able to see, you know, what actually, you know, kind of happened just by looking at the minutes versus going back to research all of the legislation and everything that went on. But I do appreciate, you know, our minutes and our agendas and, and everything that she's doing. She has some really sophisticated equipment that I'm not sure that I could handle, or, you know, so she said there's a new transcribing app that she has, and I guess that does quite a bit. So, you know, I think for further discussion, maybe at another time, we do need to, I think we should probably discuss, you know, compensation for what we're currently requiring for, not just for Chris, but for that position. I think it's quite a bit involved there, especially with everything, like I said, that's going on in the city, and maybe that's something that we may need to meet in executive session at some point to discuss further. All right. Mr. Peters?
I have nothing.
Mr. Robinson?
Well, since we're on the topic of, of grass and how everything looks, I do want to just make some mentions of, you know, we have the Rib Fest, and we have shop hops and everything, of making sure you're taking care of your properties from, from the front of your doors to the back, and your back doors, and taking care of your neighbors. If you have someone around you that needs to help, help them, or downtown, I don't know what else, what we can do, but we have the trees, and I've been noticing more and more that it's starting to look like a weed instead of a tree. Just, if there's anything that needs help, reach out, help, help someone, even if you help one person, if everybody helps one person, it can start helping everything look a lot better. And with everything that's coming to London, the people that are coming here that aren't from here, not only that, but ourselves, who have to live here every day, we want something to be proud of and something that looks great. So I challenge everybody to help out your neighbors, take care of your own properties. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. A lot of the information that you gave, I had seen that previously, and I was kind of shocked at the percentages, and, but thanks for bringing that up tonight. Very good. I want to thank all city employees for a job well done. I got to give a special shout-out to the London Police Department. If you don't know, there was an incident went down the other night. Our officers were involved, made a traffic stop, and anyway, there's not anything such as a routine traffic stop. And I can relate to that, being a former police officer. I did have a man draw a knife on me one night, and I had a choice, tried to talk him out of it or shoot him. But I used a nice big belly club, knocked it out of his hand, got him out of the car. Everything was okay. That worked out good. But this thing that happened the other night, that officer could have been killed. He was shot at. Cruiser was damaged. I just, you know, it's a thankless job, but by God, I'll tell you what, I'm proud of the London Police Department tonight, and they've been doing some great work, and I just, you know, next time you see one of them, stop and shake his hand, give him a hug, do whatever you gotta do, but God bless them. If it wasn't for them, this country would be in chaos. That's all I can say. Rib Fest is going on, starts tomorrow. Hope everybody will go out and enjoy some good ribs, good music, support the city. I want to thank all my council members. Appreciate you all. Great job tonight. To Chris, hopefully, we won't be having three-hour council meetings in the future, hopefully, but.
Hopefully, yes, we're growing.
We're growing, yeah. You could get to four. But thank you for a job well done, too. You do great, and the notes are fantastic. Appreciate you very much. I just ask the Lord to bless our city, take care of our people that live here, bless us, be with us, and watch over us. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hitt.
I'd like to thank Lee Lichten also for the presentation and making, creating awareness of what's going on, on the 8th for issue one. And then the Safety Committee meeting is the 8th in the meeting room over here at 5:00. Make sure you go out and enjoy the Rib Fest. That's it.
All right. Mr. Stahl?
I too like to thank the police. It was very interesting, you two, on it. I watched it for 40 minutes, just from here down to the TA, and they were very professional, very good, is very good about all of it. It's just a shame, something like that. My wife likes to watch those TV shows, and I said, this is homemade, and it's just kind of neat. Notes like that, and have everybody come out and enjoy the Rib and Jazz Festival. Between that and the Strawberry, three days each, how many thousands of people come downtown? And once we kick us out of town, it's a shame that all these people won't be downtown to see all the wonderful things they go at, changing downtown, like the old buildings downtown, they put new windows in part of them yesterday, and what a difference it's making. And just go out and enjoy yourself this weekend at the Rib Festival.
Thank you. And like to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and I, you know, again, want to thank everyone for the pride that they are taking in our city. It's, it's getting better. I've heard it over the years, you know. It used to be such a good place and everything, and I think that it is getting back to that now. Lots of people are taking, taking an interest in it and putting their pride into the city and making it a really good place to live and to work. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.